All right, so I'd like to open this November fifteenth workshop. And I'll begin with a roll call, please.
Jessica Riley here.
Michelle Kirkby here.
Tim Nagy here.
Shay Brook here. Is Leo here virtually? No, not yet. Okay, we'll wait for Leo if he's on business, so he may or may not join us. Alrighty, so, um, new beginnings. So, um, before we dive in, I just want to thank all the sixteen candidates who applied for the, applied to be voting members of the new SBC. I was very hopeful at the very beginning. We were, we only had two applicants, so I think efforts were made to really spread the word, so I'm really grateful for that. And we all know that Scott McDermott chose his four picks. And so I'm very hopeful that we're on the right path to form a new and successful SBC. So, um, so the first part, how this is going to work out, or this is what we talked about in our last meeting, was the first part is maybe go over questions that we would like to ask those who we invite to interview. And then the second portion of the workshop would be for each school committee member to share their shortlist of candidates they'd like to invite to an interview, and why they want us to consider them, why you chose them. Does that make sense, everyone on board? All right, super.
Just one minor call or admit.
Yeah.
But I think a little conversation on why, you know, what attributes or what we're looking for in that shortlist.
Okay, yes.
Is meaningful for all of us, just general conversation, because this is just a starting point.
Yeah.
But I think that, I just think it might uncover some interesting elements.
Yeah.
You know, amongst us, so, you know, I think you said anyways, sample questions. I'm just saying, let's put a little focus on that.
Okay. All right.
What's behind it.
Sure, okay.
And we're trying to, are we keeping it at an hour? I also want to be balanced.
Yes, yes, yes.
So I'll leave my book in response to.
Okay, so did you want to start off with that?
No, I don't want to, I'm okay with sample questions.
Okay.
I'm saying before you talk about this shortlist.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I think that is part of the context of why we chose, you know, maybe the reasons why and what we're looking for exactly. All right, so Jess, do you want to start off first to share your list? Because I'm hoping we'll come up, we'll share our questions, and then maybe we'll just come to consensus and maybe tweak and, you know, work with what we've got and come up with four questions or so.
Well, I'm actually really pleased with what we've got, particularly given that we have restrictions around, and we don't have two spots beyond school committee members. And given the restriction that we must appoint somebody with educational experience, if possible.
If possible.
And so there are four or five people here who have, if possible, educational experience within this group, although there are several that I would strongly recommend, I think, bridge a lot of needs, and I would really strongly recommend the select work look at. I have to say that attribute wise, if we're looking at kind of a hierarchy of education, but then also what this building would essentially kind of, what purpose it would serve, and also the population that it would serve. I have to say that my kind of top three candidates would be Rob Worth.
Oh, wait, wait.
Wait, were we not there yet?
We're not. So first portion of the workshop, if we can come to consensus, that's all right, about our questions.
Oh, okay, I'm so sorry.
We would like, yeah.
All right, I spaced for a second.
That's right.
Okay, so my kind of top question, because I think that the the rest of this will follow, is if you were to be placed on the school building committee, how would you be able to integrate the messages of modern elementary education standards so as to educate your and bring everybody to a level on the committee of basics and necessities? So how do you communicate that across your own board? Not even within the community, but how do you communicate that? Much as, you know, warrant committee members will be educating people on what we need to do in this place. And economically, I think that we need to be looking at, how do we provide that message, and what do you think the best way of doing that is over the long term? Because a school building, and almost any committee, starts with this kind of grand vision, but eventually you have to figure out what principles are the most important in terms of education, in terms of finance. How do we, or how does that member continue to focus on the educational goals, important standards that are needed within any kind of project? And how do you, how would you build those relationships, and what touchstones do you think start? You know, obviously, we have, you know, professionals on the board, obviously, Dr. Mars, you'll have educational goals, and then, but how do you do that? And what is your plan for that, if you have one? Or how would you have you, how you've done that in the past with other groups that you've worked within? And I think that almost everything else will flow from there. However, I also have to say that there's a second question to this, that I know that this is not part of what the town goals are. I hope that they get there someday soon. But I also want to know how this person will also bring up the very important point of how we serve all students, all families, within a perspective of the differences within our community. How do we promote equity? Equal access? You know, I think we're looking at the senior center, which was built nearly fifteen years ago, is actually not ADA compliant. You know, like, how do we make sure that those things happen? But not even with disabilities, with access and equal space for all sorts of different levels. So I really think that that's, given that it is part of our charter and our mission, then, and not anybody else is in town, Darmo better be making sure that that is an important part of what we're doing, because this is for fifty years.
So I think what would be helpful, thank you, Jess, is if we all share our questions, and then maybe we can kind of tweak on that, you know, and maybe see if other themes come from this, and. Michelle.
Sure. Thank you, Jess. I was actually echoing a little on just just said, I think, communication. So I feel like my questions had kind of a broader theme when I was trying to figure them out, so it wasn't the same questions, kind of tackling the same thing. So talking a little on what, or playing off of what Jess just said, one of my questions was about relationship building and communication. So my question is, this new SBC will be twelve individuals who likely don't know each other well or at all. What, in your opinion, are the key ingredients in guiding and maintaining working relationships? Give examples of how you've made this work for you.
Beautiful. There you go.
I like that. Can you just repeat that, please? Yep. The, this new SBC will be twelve individuals who likely don't know each other well or at all. What, in your opinion, are the key ingredients in guiding and maintaining working relationships? Give examples of how you've made these work for you. Love it. And then one of my other questions was, the last school project failed. What can the new SBC do this time to ensure the project succeeds? Please be specific as it's as possible in your explanation. I wanted to utilize this question to show that people had understood the different challenges that happened in the last project, and were able to articulate possible possible places that things could go different, but also just anticipating, right? Anticipating kind of challenges that they might, might see going forward. Another one I had was just very point blank, like, why should you be selected? What specific qualities will you bring to the new SBC that differentiate you from other applicants? Again, if we're looking at trying to make this as well-rounded as possible, I think it's important for us to make sure that we are having, you know, kind of the Venn diagram of twelve different people that come together, but bring a lot of different, different pieces to the, to the puzzle. And then finally, have you ever anticipated potential problems and proactively developed steps to avoid them? I wanted somebody who could show that they weren't just sitting there, you know, tunnel vision on what was being told to them, or what was being said, but had this wherewithal. I'm like, wait a minute, I see that that could be something that could be a challenge down the road. What are we looking at to help anticipate that and kind of try to problem step around it before it happens?
Okay, cool. And you're asking for an example?
More have they done, and then yes, what have they done?
Yes, okay. Beautiful, so this is my four. Okay, cool.
Yeah, and so much similar, I'll stay just a thread on there. But very similar to, I think, your third one, Michelle, either second or third. Share some lessons learned from your observations of the prior SBC process proposal that they brought to the town in outcome. How would you apply some of those learnings to future SBC committees, you know, future SBCs?
Yep.
And then, and this is a little more specific on the project, but what are your top concerns around the project? And I always think of it as, you know, positive and negative, so what are your top concerns? And are areas of opportunity? What are you excited, what excites you about the project? It's a, it's a
I like that.
Bit of an end around, around what are the priorities?
Yeah.
But I'm actually really intrigued with the what are your concerns?
Yeah.
What, hearing that from any candidate is valuable, whether they're selected or not. And then some of it was more background. And I'll get into this too, is why I selected a shortlist. Can you get, it's shared experiences where you've worked with committees or subcommittees that may have divided opinions, where you've taken an active role in driving consensus.
Look at, can you repeat that?
Yeah, can you share experience, or, you know, an experience or some experiences where you've worked with committees or subcommittees, may have lots of divided opinions, you've taken an active role in driving consensus? Then the last, can you talk about your experience professionally and as a volunteer that makes you a strong candidate for this committee? That could be important. That is both, you know, either or. More interested in the volunteer side, but I recognize not everybody has taken that on, so, you know.
Super.
So it's very similar things.
Yeah, yeah, mine's similar.
I'm not too, we can work.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, we can work with funny. I think it's just that idea, how do we, how do we bring in people who can work with a number of different a number of different perspectives within the town, and hold on to the, the important parts of an educational plan of dealing with also the realities of building projects, of the finances that we're able to deal with? How do you work those balances and continue to communicate? And I think that's important both within and without, you know, within the committee, but on the outside as well. I think one of the things that concerns me the most about this second go around is that people are so tired that they'll just say, okay, we're gonna, we're just gonna build a school no matter how. And then that it becomes a performative expensive exercise, instead of really looking what our values are. And that's, I think that's probably my greatest concern in general. And I don't expect that. I think the people that I see here of our applicants, you know, all of them, I have to say, almost all made a truly excellent kind of proposal for themselves, right? So.
So I'll just share, I mean, most of mine mimic what you folks say. So, so if it pointed to the SBC, what would your top priorities be? You know, again, the theme is eyes wide open going into this, and I also want to hear if they're committed to the project, then, you know, and, and I think that's important to get. So are you committed to a building project? And what are your, what are your parameters needed to support a project at town meeting? And and I asked for priorities, which I've just mimicked at the top ones. But I think basically what I'm hearing here are a lot of themes in terms of gaining different perspectives. What's your experience in, no, I wouldn't say a conflict situation, but at least consensus building? And so, um, I'm wondering, Jess, you were the one who, you were the only one who stated a question about the education piece.
Is that alarming or good?
Not at all, no, that's, that's the obvious one. Yeah, I know, but I'm stating, how can we, but we have awesome questions here.
Yeah.
How do we integrate that piece of it in those questions? Um, so I'm trying to think.
And maybe one question to elaborate, you said what parameters to support a town meeting, what do you mean?
Yeah, so, um, what do they think that we need to get to that point? Because I think going, my view is that going into, when we go for a town vote, I think we want to be confident that it's going to pass. So what do we need to do to get it to pass? And, um, while also thinking about Jess's point of not giving up everything just to pass because the school costs fifty dollars or something or other, but, you know, what are the priorities? What do we have to do as a community or as a committee to get the community?
Is it, my one thought about that is, is that a premature question? Right? Because to some extent, I want, again, eyes wide open.
Yeah.
But also not anticipating poor outcome. Right? What?
No, I'm saying realistic.
No, but I understand that, but it's, it's is that the question that we need to ask right now? Or does that flow from communication, working together, and then doing those touchpoints over time? You know, because I don't.
This is the point of it, you know, to have that discussion of really what do we, what does it air down to? I, in my opinion.
And I'm not arguing against it so much, I just want to make sure that we're not kind of setting setting the basis, setting the, the total success of a school building project on that it just passed, right? Like, I think that's incredibly important. In fact, it was the most important thing. But is that something we can be thinking about three years?
Yeah. Well.
Four. I think you have to start with the end of mind.
Yeah.
Like, if, if, if that
That is the end.
Group gets together. And that's not, you know, you may come up with, I'm not sure, mission statement, goals, but everything that it ties in, it eventually it's down to two thirds.
Yeah.
Right?
Absolutely.
Take it off. And it does not mean.
Is it asked now?
Yeah. But for me, I think it's.
Or maybe it can be woven into some of these. Okay, so first of all, I, Michelle, I liked how your questions were simple.
Yeah.
Yet broad. So they were simply stated, because sometimes we, you know, if we ask questions, or I should say, if someone asks me a question, and there are all these parts, like, wait, sorry, repeat. You know, so I liked your approach of the clean and concise, yet we're, we're asking broad enough questions that they can really, you know, even their, their answers accordingly. So, um, how do we kind of use Jess's point in terms of prioritizing that, what we are charged to, to deal, you know, to, um, we're charged, we're charged with the educational.
What if it was just, I mean, it could be fairly simple, you know, based on some of the experience you've shared or other like areas? You know, how does, how does the fact that this is a building, educational building, and, you know, the mission of the public, maybe of public schools? Yeah. How do you feel, you know, how does that factor into this, the role? I mean, that's fairly open-ended, but it allows them to can, can it, is it, has there been much consideration for that?
Yeah.
I mean, Jess, I'm not trying to, like, yeah, how are you thinking about this? In fact, it's an educational building, you know, it would be kind of clear.
How do we simplify that question? So it's, it's very just clear, concise, so.
Somebody said, hey, you know what, I don't think there's much of a difference between the building here and the public safety building. You kind of have an answer on that. Right? Like, it's not, it's not top of mind for that specific individual. If, um, you know, like, it does allow, it allows him to go, him or her, you know, them to go in any given direction, and so. And I'm not, you know, that's the more open-ended approach.
Yeah, I mean, I do want to mention that any, any questions that the committee comes up with now, or that you guys, I mean, I love everything. I think we're all kind of generally talking about communication.
Yeah.
And whatever questions we come up with through this, I think that we're not going to have like a wide range of, I think it's very specific. You know, like, we all have very much the same specific ideas. As long as we really try to emphasize and talk about the qualities that actually have allowed us to bring these people to the front, right? So however we want to work that in is fine with me. I obviously trust you guys. I just wanted to make sure that we pin it. And I also think that we also need to pin in the fact that we serve, you know, that the range of people that we serve is important for us to think about.
Because you're absolutely right, absolutely.
So, if, if we can incorporate that within our general, general kind of open-ended questions, I'm great with that. Let's just figure out how.
Yeah, so we have a meeting on Thursday night. So how about, um, like, listen to the tape and kind of come up with some kind of final questions we can consider? And then we finalize it Thursday night, because this is, we're already a half hour in. And I really want to talk about the candidates and who we want to bring forward to interview. Does that sound like a fair approach?
Sure.
Okay, beautiful.
I'm not sure, would it be okay with you if, if hearing all four of our opinions, if we sent directly to you, but not for distribution? Ideas?
Please.
About how that could be done?
Yes, please.
Okay.
That's a great idea.
And then we would have that be part of the meeting packet. Would that be acceptable, Dr. Mars, and that's within the other meeting last week?
Yeah, okay, great, yeah.
I mean, I feel like I shared my idea.
Yeah.
Like, I don't.
Well, actually, what would be helpful is, can you please email me the questions as you wrote them? And then I can kind of play with it and bring something Thursday night. Awesome. So should we go through shortlist, Jess?
Yeah. So again, considering the hierarchy of education and then elementary education, and then overall experience. I would say that in no particular order, I would bring forth Rob Worth and Patrick Duffy and Meredith Chamberlain. I think that those are the, the three that I feel have the most kind of long-term relevant experience. Rob Worth is has extensive elementary experience, but he also has it as an administrator of an elementary, so principal of an elementary school, as well as an assistant principal for quite some time. He has children in the district, you know, he is building relationships amongst many of the the groups, and has really wanted to be able to pursue being involved in the educational community, but has just not been able to do it up to this point. But I do think that this is really, this would be a great opportunity for him. Patrick Duffy has a really significant amount of elementary experience across multiple different school systems, be they rural or, you know, urban. And I think that he would very well be able to speak to educational experiences across multiple perspectives and be able to bring his kind of ideas in, in, in a way that is not necessarily would be a freshness to his ideas and his ways of seeing, you know, what he's seen. And then I would also bring forth Mary Chamberlain, because she, I think, would bring a really excellent perspective on the SELDEI perspective. She is head of guidance at the in Canton, and she would also have an extensive kind of reference around special education and about how special education experiences can be incorporated to, within classrooms, general or separate space that would help all kids in terms of accessibility of learning, in terms of space, in terms of equity, you know, things that she's seen over time. So those would be my, my top three, given the given our parameter specifically.
Beautiful, thanks. Before I see my selections, I also wanted to echo what you said early on. I just want to thank everybody who took the time and energy to submit an application and really throw their, their name in the ring. I felt that there were a lot of strong applicants and generally appreciate the individuals who want to take part of this process and really be proactive in finding a solution for the New Dale Street School. So thank you to all the applicants for putting their names forward. That being said, my top three picks in no particular order, I also selected Robert Worth. I felt that he kind of embodies all the qualities that we should be looking at as an appointment from the school committee. He's currently a principal at a school, but he's newer to the administration side, so I felt that that kind of, he would have that, that newer fresh perspective on what he's looking after, an administrator, so truly understanding what needs to happen from a classroom standpoint. But I thought that was very important. He, you know, talked about how he's been a part of the MSBA project, while this likely, as of right now, will not be an MSBA project. I feel like his experience going through school building project was important. And just, yes, him having young daughters in the district and having children that will be a part of this, I think, is really important. So he was one of mine. Meredith Chamberlain was also one of my selections. I think her experience in Canton Public Schools as the director of counseling would be very relevant to kind of what we're looking at overall from a school committee appointment. She also has a very good breadth of community involvement in Medfield itself, and, you know, around the DEI committee and CPAC. She served on MCP as well as school site council for Memorial. So I feel like that, you know, I kind of talked to her about, Tim was saying earlier about people who volunteer, like, she's really giving back to this school system as well as being a part, you know, professionally in a different one. She also has a child currently at Dale. So I thought that that would be, again, another fresh set of eyes in regards to, like, my child is there right now, and this is what I see professionally and personally. And then also echoing that she'd be a strong advocate in regards to what we should be looking at in regards to, you know, how we're, how we're building, how we're creating space or making a building, or whatever we decide to do that encompasses elementary school practices now and in the future. So I felt like she would be a strong person as well. My last one, my thought process was a little like, while we do have the education piece as part of our parameter, what would it look like if we evaluated somebody about educational piece? So my last person is actually Lauren Flacco. I felt that her professional background in communication, specifically in child-focused companies, could be really relevant. We know that the new SBC will need to have a strong communication strategy. I think if we, I think we need to be looking at other towns that have successfully passed the school, and many of them have utilized a third party in regards to getting that communication out. I'm not going to advocate for that one way or the other right now, but I do think that's something the new SBC needs to look at. But in that realm, I think you would want somebody on your side. I think she would be a nice asset to have as a point person on the SBC side, that her resume shows that she's very able to articulate kind of these broader strategies and bring them down into a place that makes sense for the general public. She talks a lot about how she's overhauled external communications recently, kind of the stuff she's done on social media, as well as internal documentation. So external communication, internal documentation, as well as having three kids, young kids. So again, this would be somebody who's a parent, who would be there advocating on that, on that space. And so she was my non-specific educational background person that I thought would be interesting from a consideration standpoint.
If I can just add on to that, I had actually not considered her in my top three because she didn't have the educational experience. However, I was, I did mark specifically the two to be a fantastic SBC, as select ward appointee, if they were to do that, so. But we have no control over that, and I do. But we have no control over that. And I do find that those, um. I was impressed by her. Her qualifications, her resume and her ability to really build that marketing piece in a way that is, um. Simply kind of mutual communication. And that it was incorporated within the members of the. Of the SBC, you know, as documented, so, whereas, um. I, as the bylaw intends, so. So I have, why would I have no problem with your, I just, with the, uh, I just. Want to make sure that we're also, um. The SBC guidelines, whether they're, um, there mandated or, uh, suggested.
Suggest, can't tell.
Cool.
Tim, let's see.
Yeah, so, um, two sides, uh, one. Like, well, you see, I didn't quite get down to three, a little conversation, but I think it is worthwhile. Like. What I thought was important, um, you know, consensus builder. Um, experience with, with town commuted committees, like projects, you know, could be youth sports, youth. Anything, but you'll, you'll always have those contentious environments. Sometimes they're just saying it is, is important, although I. I really would like to think this is going to be a path of success, but just managing, managing that.
In every community, there's always things you have to work through, people, you know, that's just what it is.
Um, you know, did it stick out from just reading the applications, like motivation, you know, true desire to serve the town? What's, what's kind of like. Burning inside. Um, I think it was kind of an interesting one. I think if, if there was somebody who really came forward with a clear agenda and say it must look like this. You know, I think that to me was more of a red flag. Um, hard to tell, you know, some folks, um. You know, I did a little research here and there. Where they came from, you know, what they've done, but is, is there the element of trust? You know, depending, you know, and then another side just more represents my background. Kind of like selling expertise. You know, um, selling expertise is not saying, hey, I'm going to. Um, sell you something that you don't really want. It's more seeing the risks. Seeing the end game in sight can always kind of helping to manage towards that. Um, and you'll see with one of the candidates, right? I'm, I was at least intrigued that, that came up, but I, I found. That is important, you know, early-stage decisions, but what's that going to mean when it comes to a vote? And then just being, you know, thoughtful, which is, that's the case in complex project. Um, I think the educational experience, it goes, like, I didn't. I didn't put there that that was just embedded in everything I was doing, but I would not say that was like every one of my candidates that said they have to have that. You know, I do think one of the things I learned from the prior SBC. Um, there is also a great deal of expertise you gain from the architects, you gain from the administration, the principals, et cetera. And, um. You know, I think we, we don't, we recognize we have that, right? So I, I kind of. Lean a little more towards, uh, if somebody's equal footing, those that can get, you know, manage the complex projects, maybe somebody has financial budgeting. You know, different areas that I might say, hey, you know, those might be. You know, as important. I don't have any control over what the, um, select board was, are, are going to choose. You know, you could say, hey, that, that, they should bring that forward, but we don't have that criterion. Um, so I had a couple that I, I, I had Meredith Chamberlain, and this is not in order, and I had Anthony. I don't know if I can say his name correctly, Pam, Pam Antonas.
Um, D. Dominicans?
No, Pam Antonas.
Pam Tessa, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and, and I, I think you folks have, everybody's brought Meredith up. I, I think I echo a lot of what you said. I, I did like lots of committee experiences, educational experience. Great motivation. Um, I didn't see as much building, but that, you know, I, I, that was, um, you know, so I, I put that. Um, with Anthony, I, what I saw was, um. Good, like, experiences, you know, lots of experience. All out there acknowledging though, um, good motivation. Uh, that, that kind of did jump out. I think some of the things, um. That, that, you know, he's done, it's running. It's successful, a company that he's run, serving on, uh, president of the board for Habitat for Humanity. Um, so some of the other experiences that I see, it kind of gets the feel of how these things, um, need to happen. Um, great, you know, great volunteer experience. Um, and then that, from there, I, I almost. Like, if I was to choose three, I, I didn't quite come to a final consensus. I'll just, uh, it shared your names. Um, I did have Robert Worth for, you know, lots of the reasons you folks. Uh, shared. I didn't see as much experience in these types of projects, but, you know, he, he brings that. I had a Chuck and I don't know, I don't know these people. Intro via, yeah, like, and I'm just reading my general comments, but, but I had him as, you know, it's really strong team, team builder from what I could tell. Um, very good motivation, um, little more work experiences versus town committee experiences, so. And then, um, the other one I wanted to hear a little more was, was Sean K. Um, you know, background, born and raised in Medfield. You know, very, very strong background, um, just I like the words like. Driving, you know, folks toward a common goal based on working together and building consensus.
I don't have a, a resume or a letter of interest from Sean. I simply have his, uh, Google form.
Yeah.
I agree.
Do we have that? Cause I, I feel like.
If you let me finish.
Yeah, go ahead.
Which I would say that, so part of me says, hey, if you didn't put all that in. Are you was motivated? Is this something you really want to do? Um, but I also. You know, I did, I did like the, the team building and I also saw a fair amount of some of that, um, sales experience around. Looking at how you bring a project like this forward. Um, so it just might bring a di- a different light. I'm not going to say, hey. This is like top candidate, even if we don't interview, but I, I wanted to learn a little more. I, I just saw it limited, it, it did, um, fill out the form. May or may not, I don't know, it's done this a whole bunch. So, um, but, but I thought, um, even talking to his, if you're on a project, what do you think it's going to take to be successful? Um, so I, I had to. You know, coming as I sat down today, I had at least the two. That I was, um, Meredith and Anthony that I would say, yes, for sure. And then, uh, th- those are the three that I would. Since I'm not saying we have to go and do all three.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to hear, you know, there were some consensus, some, um, names out there that shared a comment. I do, I have four. So, uh, and in no particular order, um, again, is so Robert Worth, and for all the reasons we folks have stated. I feel that when you've got young children, you're really vested, really wanting this to, to happen. On the elementary school principal, the MSBA experience and, um. And I even just appreciated his graciousness in his letter and how he kind of ended it. I just, I, 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 I appreciate those kinds of, you know, sentiments. In addition to experience and it just kind of the spirit going into this, um, means a lot to me personally. Um, I actually have Lauren Platko as well on my list, um. She, um, her communication experience, her strategic marketing and communication, I think, would be a huge asset to this committee. And, um, she too has small children who would benefit from this and. And her experience in collaborating with different teams, I think that's a, a great skill to have. And, um, so her experience to me, I don't know who she is, but on paper, I was very intrigued and very impressed. That I would be more than happy to have her come forward to interview. Um, I too have Meredith Chamberlain. And, um, she, an educator, a counselor, and I think those skills of being a counselor in a group dynamic would, would be an asset. And, um, and I appreciate that she too has been a giver to the community in terms of all her volunteer roles. Not to say that folks who haven't done anything yet, um, are excluded, um, because people are coming forth. Um, so I just, I appreciated that with, um, Meredith's experience. And, um, so my fourth one. Was also Patrick Duffy. I'm a little intrigued. Um, you know, he has that educational background. Um, has small kids, kind of dealt in that specialty realm of, um. As well with his work, um, in, with buildings. And so, um. I was intrigued by his, and again, I don't know him, um. So, um, I'd be happy to hear more.
How many people do we feel is realistic to bring forward?
Good question.
I mean, we have two spots.
Yep.
I think that we should make sure that, that whomever we bring forward isn't almost like a foregone conclusion, you know? I mean, I, I would feel comfortable and feel probably be manageable to bring four or five.
I, I was thinking four, but I could do five, you know, I'm not.
I mean, I want to make sure that we honor Tim's kind of understanding around, you know. People he sees within the. Within his realm that he, he respects. Um, it sounds to me like. Uh, three of us at least have thought that Lauren Platko was. Could be a really good member. Um, however. At the same time, we really do have to own the part of this that is educational. And in fact, when I was, when I spoke for the committee. At, uh, town meeting. Uh, I was roundly shouted down for suggesting that perhaps we could decide what profession. Or what experience would best work.
But I don't read the bylaw as mandating us to, to pick.
I'm just saying, so, so town sentiment at that point, which was a tough town meeting and there wasn't a lot of people who were going to hear anything.
Yeah.
At that point, but that was part of the, the deliberation. So if we're talking about what would happen down the road at the next town meeting where we have to have this. And we want to take that experience into place. We have to at least consider.
I, I agree. And I think, um, that if we decide to bring her forward, you know, we would, we would. Then deliberate, you know?
Yeah.
Looking at the totality tonight, the, um, Board of Selectmen, they're having their meeting. And, um, they are going to see if they can come to consensus with, um, their folks that they want to, um. I, I don't know what their process is, final process is going to be, but, um.
Yeah.
Um, that'll be, that'll be part of it. So, um, and to Tim's point about someone with finance, I think knowing already Scott's. Um.
Right.
Choices that that's good for us to know, like, they, they're kind of like.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. So we've got Bill, we've got, uh, Bill Werner. There's Mather, there's.
Chief Meaney.
Chief Meaney.
And Carolyn Casey.
Carolyn Casey, right.
So, um, I feel that's, that's a really good foundation for the, for the new committee already. Um, so, looks to me that I was taking tallies that Robert Worth is definitely someone we want to bring forward.
Mm-hmm.
Am I correct?
Mm-hmm, good, good, good.
Okay, great. Um, Meredith Chamberlain.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Lauren Platko. Um. We had two for Patrick Duffy. So that's four.
So, so Tim, I guess kind of the. The vote kind of goes to, or not the vote, but the, who you might want to bring forward within your kind of finance. Consensus building, you know, like who, who you felt was somebody who would be.
Yeah, um, I also, if you have four, I'm not. I don't, I don't like, um. I don't know that I would say, hey, this is.
Well.
Um, disaster, I, I guess, cause, you know, we do think about an interview process, high level, like. You know, based on those questions, we're trying to target. Thirty minutes a person? Just kind of trying to think.
Oh, for the interview?
Yeah, what do we?
I. Thirty minutes long.
It's a long time.
Yeah.
So if it's, yeah, I just, I wanted to get.
I mean, I, I think that we also don't.
We have to, it's good to think through that and also think about your questions. So, like, look, we want you to kind of. Maybe you even share the questions, but you, you know, we're going to try to cover these four questions in fifteen minutes.
Yes, yes, that is the intention.
You know, something, something like that. And I don't, I think it's, uh. You know, I would. I would just put. Anthony. Was my other top candidate, so I just put him.
I, I do remember identifying him now.
I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't, I don't have to.
Yeah, okay.
So I'd be very happy to, to bring him forward. I think that if he's willing to, to give us the. Time.
Yeah.
And said, perhaps the selection.
Yeah, exactly. What they decide tonight, I think, you know, that's important for us to stay in tune with and, um. See where we come out. All right, so, um, Robert Worth, Meredith Chamberlain, Lauren Platko. Patrick Duffy and Anthony, um.
Anthony P, because I think it was two references.
Right, yeah, there were. Great. And I just want to mention, cause also in our packet was, um, in, in full disclosure, Teresa Prado.
Mm-hmm.
Who submitted, um, there was confusion. She'd submitted an email to, um. Scott McDermott on October thirtieth, so the day before the deadline and, um. Originally I had said to her that, um.
Well, we didn't know that. Applications could be taken by email to Scott, right? We had. So, so there was no kind of.
Yes, but I.
Willfully choosing not to.
Yeah, but I want to share what I respond, I responded to her that, um, you know, um. We were following a process and the process was never first and it was on the website. And then, and then she responded to me, um, saying, well, this is what I saw.
Mm-hmm.
First, and I said, well, this is what I saw. So I can see where there was a miscommunication and I do feel badly that, um. That there was that miscommunication, um, but I, I feel that, um. It would not be fair to put her forward considering, um. We had a process that November first, putting in an application, um. Submitting it, um, your cover letter, your, you know, your resume, et cetera. Um, but I want to say that she has been a proven giver to our community. And I was very impressed with her combo, um, accomplishments and, um, all she's done. And I know her and I like her and I'm grateful for all she's done. But, um. I just want to say that, that did go through and, um. I just, I, I really want to follow our guidelines. I think we're, we're under a, a microscope here and, um.
It's unfortunate that our guidelines are the ones that we, we believed were, were happening. We're not necessarily communicated on the, the town.
Well, it was our, our, they were absolutely on the town website.
Yeah, so, but it also said, or you could.
Yes.
Give an email to the town moderator. And while I think that probably in, in our minds, that was for. For Scott's appointments. It was ambiguous. And so I actually did consider, uh, Ms. Prado as part of the, the pool of applicants. Um, and, and considered her letter. Um. As intently as I did anyone else's. And, um, I do think she has a lot of volunteer experience, just seems like she's, you know. Um. It. I just didn't identify her as somebody who could meet the specific needs that we have right now. Um, for somebody within the committee.
Okay.
But I, I thought that her, that application and her experience was lovely. And, and, you know, relevant, but not within, uh, kind of bring me forward just for this far, you know, certainly select board is welcome to.
Okay.
To consider her application too. I wouldn't think it disqualifies her, but that's my personal opinion.
Okay. Great. So it sounds to me that we've got our five candidates that we'd like to bring forward. Um, Thursday, we will, um, finalize our questions and then, um. Come up with a date. To have these interviews. And, um, hopefully we can wrap this up.
I feel we should be open to having Zoom interviews with these people.
Oh, yes.
Asking them all to come, it's the place, just because I think timelines, that would make a lot more sure. Sense around people's schedules and things like that. They know they have a first fifteen minute block.
Let's, let's talk about it. I mean, I, I was thinking about it as in an ideal world, we could do it all at once.
I, I suppose I.
All of us at once, but maybe we give them fifteen minute blocks.
They each get their own fifteen minute blocks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chaos. Um, am I thinking differently than what you're thinking?
What Longwood, Lo- Long Meadow did is they had, um, one date. They brought all their candidates. They brought all their candidates in and each person was interviewed with the same questions. And it was just in person. Yeah. And that was, that was it.
I think it should be recorded.
Choice of in person or Zoom. I can't make this data. I can make this data. All five of us and then five people were trying to interview and pushing the deadline further and further and further.
I don't think we're going to push it any further. We're, we're committed, you know, to getting this done early December. But let's try for in person, because I do think in person is valuable.
But it would be recorded.
Sorry?
It would be recorded.
Yeah.
As a school committee, right? So that it is on Zoom and okay. So, yeah, that's all I want. I, I don't care how we necessarily do it, except that one-on-one and recorded.
But let's make an attempt to have in person. That would be my personal preference, but I can see if that's creating obstacles. We can, we can make adjustments. How about that?
Like here, where?
Yeah.
Cause this is at least, you want to be in an environment that you're comfortable. If somebody logistics wise prefers Zoom, then I can say that's mandate, that's their choice. Would be my view, you know, you never know, somebody maybe is logistics tan, but I you know, if I were going, I would do everything I could to be there.
Yeah.
Face to face is, is what I would suggest. I wouldn't say, no, that's not feasible. And yes, something like this would be, you, you think. And it is, but it, it, you know, you're saying they have their fifteen minutes, but it's going to be everyone's here for that conversation.
Yeah.
So let's take and make an attempt to get everybody.
Yeah, but I guess if they know they have fifteen minute block, they don't have to be here. I guess was my point, right? If you can sit and watch everybody else, but if you
Yeah, that's fair. Yeah, no, I'm not, that's totally.
Or what are we asking the applicants? Are we asking them for an hour and a half? Or are we asking them for fifteen minutes?
I would think that we would within that timeframe, assign them a slot. You know, you're on from ten to ten fifteen. Yeah, because we don't want to waste people's time.
And even just think about logistics. Five minutes between.
Sure. Yes, 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 yes. A buffer.
And then you may also want to think about then when, what's our process to finalize. Then it's a meeting a week later.
Um, I would probably see, my, my initial thought is that we would have that block of time for the interviews. And afterwards, we would continue the conversation as a committee to make our decision. Instead of again, yet another day, another workshop, you know, so I think we've got this workshop. We're going to come up with our questions at our regular public meeting, open meeting and then interview and our decision or deliberation afterwards. Does that sound fair?
And then, and you can read, add that the agenda Thursday is to finalize the questions, maybe finalize what our processes.
Correct. So I thought I would maybe what I'll do is tell those folks that they have been selected to at least go through the interview process. And that maybe within that I will include a doodle form or something or other. And find out what would work out and we'll take it from there.
And obviously in our communications to them, because we'll have already decided in the open meeting, what are questions?
Yeah, of course.
They'll be.
That, 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 yes, they will be finalized and they will have that courtesy of knowing your questions beforehand and all the same questions.
One comment too, I, I didn't say, but I, I was also, I was thrilled with the pool. Like overall, I thought the pool of candidates was excellent. I think it gives me, you know, continued momentum around the town. I was very, very impressed. I was appreciative of everyone to take in the time and I was genuinely, if you, if you told me, hey, you can't have, I liked a lot of candidates, you know, that, that, that's just the reality. It's, it's like, you know, I was really, really pleased about that.
Cause originally we, I think by the first deadline, we had two, I thought, oh dear. No, it gives me hope that there are many givers in this town. So that's, this is, this is a good way forward. All right. And it's eleven oh one, folks. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Thank you very much. And thanks to anybody who's watching or who's watching later.